Vice President of the Commission and I'll be running the meeting today. And I'm going to also ask for the dais to my right to begin to introduce yourself.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
Okay, before we get started, we'd like to make a motion to excuse Commission President Stephanie Summer O'Dumas.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
All right, we always start with a silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And I just ask in our prayers to also include, there was a shooting, there's been several shootings. Everyone and the families has been affected, but I wanted to focus also on College Hill. A coach was killed and also 10 year olds got to see a coach, their coach get murdered in front of them. They'll never be the same, so please keep all the families, but especially the 10 year olds in our prayers. Amen. Thank you, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
All right, now we will move to public comments. Each person has two minutes and when you hear the buzzer, we ask you to please wrap up. First person is Kelly Prather.
Madam Commissioners, thank you all for allowing me to speak, or thank you both for allowing me to speak. Bishop Hilton, I want you to let Commissioner Dumas know that I proudly submitted my vote for her last Thursday. Early voting has started, and so I've been really diligently pushing for people to start voting. The last thing we need, now my prayer is that Commissioner Dumas gets reelected. The last thing we need is a commissioner who served as a member of Cincinnati City Council and recused himself more than 50 times because of contracts that involve family members. There was definitely a conflict of interest and so we don't want the county to be gentrified. I'm a Democrat and I believe that Republicans got it right when they nominated their person. I would also like to discuss a personal issue around selective enforcement tactics which have civil and criminal implications. The Hamilton County Recorder and the Treasurer's Office are complicit in the countywide gentrification and harsh selective enforcement tactics used to seize residential and commercial properties in areas being developed. County officials, city officials and developers work with judges like Robert Ruehlman and Patrick Dinkelacher to constructively evict citizens from their homes and foreclose on property. They are complicit in using harsh selective enforcement tactics that result in the unjust criminalization, crippling, convalescing, and sadly, in some cases, death of citizens. Home, home, homes recorders or the recorder's office is transferring titles with conveyance of title documentation, with fraudulent title documentation. An example of that is a home at 1032 and 1034 Sunset Avenue that I personally owned. This is a longstanding history, or there is a longstanding history of these same tactics being used on commercial property. An example will be in Walnut Hills, Brian Muthing Boggs orchestrated a Gestapo style attack on me personally. He is Paula Muthings Boggs' husband and he works, he's over the redevelopment project. So I'll come back down, I know I only have two minutes, so I want to be brief, but I want to get some assistance in this matter because I lost 1.4 million dollars on it.
Thank you, thank you, I gotta cut you off right there.
Okay, and I did provide documentation for you all, so this is in the Commissioners' mailboxes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Dan Reginald? Dan here, or is he online? He's gonna come back? Oh, not today, okay, well he's, okay, well we, okay, well we will move on. Now we go to public comments and motions. And just want to start off to say that this, first of all, I want to thank those. I know that some people were concerned that we were not on their lives. And I know we have such a large audience that watches us. And Bishop Dreehouse got people calling her and myself, they're going crazy like their number one movie. And we appreciate all those who watch us every single week, but we're back and we are back live. We had some technical difficulties, so we're back to the regularly scheduled program. But while you were out, you may have missed, we had our Breast Cancer Awareness Day, our second annual Breast Cancer Awareness Day on Tuesday, and the place was packed in pink. And people had on their pink throughout Hamilton County, were able to honor survivors and fighters. And it was just a wonderful event, so on the slideshow, you see some of the photos. And while we had a great time on the celebration, we also got information about getting your mammograms early, early detection, the new state law that takes money out of the way so people can get the screenings and the commitment of us all to work together to fight cancer and come up with a cure. So that's what happened, it was great. And Commissioner Dreehouse and myself, we were happy to host this event and have people throughout the county recognizing. Please do not forget, on Saturday, American Cancer Society has their annual walk and they indicated that 10,000 people have already registered. So 10,000 people will be walking. And I know that both of us, Commissioner Dreehouse and myself, shared how breast cancer has touched our families, her sister, and took the life of my mother, so we know how important this is. So again, it's all month, so keep your pink out and get the mammograms and keep the education coming. It's both men and women who are being affected by breast cancer, so wanted to let you see that so you didn't miss out. Secondly, I wanted to let people know, voting has hap, is going on right now, early voting. And Hamilton County, I'm doing a little bit of bragging, I think we have one of the best early vote centers. The last election, I know we had gotten recognized for having the best process for people to get in and get out. And the board has had worked to make sure that we have this on a permanent basis for early voting. But just wanted to let people know that you can vote Monday through Friday. And we've got the hours, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM right now. And then once we get, October 29th will be the first Saturday that we can begin. And of course, Election Day is November the 8th. So you can start voting right now at the Board of Elections, we've got free parking. It's easy to go to and wanted to make sure that people had that information, that voting has begun. I think they're still looking for some poll workers though for Election Day, so we gotta say that again. If you're interested in being a poll worker on Election Day, we have a program here at the county as well. So any employee that like to work the polls, we would encourage you, we need you. Also, yesterday was a very, very exciting day for us. And the employee roundtable, I call them, but Jeff will give the correct name. But it's a group of employees that meet and tell the administration some ideas of what we can do to help the employees and work better with them. And I know Commissioner Dreehouse, myself and President Dumas, we've worked to deal with incentives for employees, bring them up to compete in the marketplace, but it's nothing like being appreciated. And so we were happy that that idea came from the employees, we were able to do it, we all three voted for it. And it was just great with the food trucks and the music and the employees feeling appreciated, getting certificates, getting to interact with each other. And I know myself and Commissioner Dreehouse were both there as well, as Jeff Aludo gave out some awards, so I'm sure he'll talk about in a minute. But I do want to thank all those who organized this, and I want to shout out Bridget Doherty and Mary Maui, JFS, and Jeff will tell us any others that were involved. But it was cool, and that might have to be our official song, "This is How We Do It," I love that. And it was just great, and I've been getting good feedback even today from employees that said, "Man, that meant a lot to me. Thank you so much." And I even saw someone walking that was not an employee and they were asking, they were talking to each other. And one lady asked her, she said, "What is that over there?" They said, "Oh, that's the Hamilton County employees." It says, "Boy, I better look into working for Hamilton County," and that's what we want. It was retention and recruitment for the future. So I'd also want to thank everybody at the HR Department, Frank and his team for helping pull that off as well. Let me see, what else do I have here? Oh, I wanted to say Blink, Blink went very well, lots of people, we got a lot of people downtown throughout, from over the Rhine to the Central Business District to the Banks area. It was a lot to do, international artists coming from all over the world, definitely on the global stage again. And just also want to say that our board was supportive of supporting Blink coming back and because of the economic impact, and so we're happy to do that. It was also, wanted to give a shout out to Blink for the Golden Garden that was down by the Black Music Walk of Fame area. It was really, really nice and they did a great job, Cincy Smile as well as Blink working together. So that was very good. I think that may be it, yeah, that's all I have, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dree.
Great, thank you, yeah, we have some of these same items, obviously. But I too want to shout out the Employee Advisory Committee that recommended that we have an appreciation lunch, which Bridget Doherty then ran with, we had all those food trucks out there. It was a chilly day, I would say we do it annually, but do it in the summertime. That's just my plug for warmer weather, but I think people would hang around a little bit longer because I ran into a couple employees today who said they were by, but it was a little chilly and so they left a little early. But I, everybody was very excited about it, they were very grateful for it. I think it shows the appreciation that we all have for our employees and the work that they do, the service they provide to residents. And so I thought it was a great event and it was great to have all different departments between 911 and the deputies and JFS and, you know, the courts were there, EMA was there, HR was there, the Public Health Department was there. It was fun, I think, for everybody to see everybody and connect, you know, that we're all working for the same purpose. So anyway, I just thought it was a wonderful event and I will be supportive of doing it every year if that comes in front of us again, and I hope it does. I also was going to shout out Blink, as you say, we partnered with our large event grant with the city, with the private sector, with the Chamber to help make that happen. It was a great event, I was down there a couple of nights and it was really something to see. And they spread it out this year and the Northern Quadrant was really cool and the courthouse, our quadrant was pretty cool. So I was glad to, that we helped to sponsor that and make that happen. Couple other things, the Islamic Relations Annual Dinner was over the weekend, they invited us out. I just wanted to give them a shout out, they do this every year. And that community is so important to the fabric of Hamilton County, so I want to thank them for the invitation. And then lastly, the Walnut Hills Library opening was this morning. They had a ribbon cutting and they have taken a beautiful old building in Walnut Hills and preserved it and then expanded on the sides to make that a much, I think they've doubled the capacity at that library. It is fantastic and a big shout out to Paula over at the library, the board members, Chris Harding happens to be one. He gave a speech evidently this after, or this morning that I missed. But yeah, what a great thing, and the library with the levy dollars is doing this work and all these different communities to make sure that the library is accessible, is utilized by the community and create, they create a hub for activities in the community. So big shout out to the public libraries, that's all I've got.
Awesome, Jeff Aludo.
Thank you Commissioners, no byleaves today, but just a quick comment to tag on to your conversation about the Employee Appreciation Day yesterday. So just again, a shout out to the Employee Advisory Committee, as you, as both of you indicated, this was their idea. And for those who may be watching, they have come up with some fantastic ideas over the course of the past year and a half, including things to help the county as it relates to attraction and retention of employees. The reinstitution of our tuition reimbursement program was largely at the, as the recommendation of the Employee Advisory Committee and a bunch of other projects that they're working on right now, which I won't go into detail on because I don't want to steal their thunder or spoil anything that they're going to come out with. But it's just a great group of employees that gets together to help provide some advice to the county, through the administration, to the board, to help us create an organization that's more employee centric and a, and an employer of choice in the community. So I want to thank the Commission for, for your guidance and your support on their efforts. You mentioned Bridget Doherty, Bridget did a fantastic job running with this and getting this pulled off. I can't thank her enough for it. And I also just wanted to take a moment, especially for folks who were not there, to highlight the Commissioner Reese, I think you mentioned the awards that were given out. And these award winners will be back at a future board meeting for some future recognition. But everything from the 513 Relief Program, the Green Mower Program, which we've highlighted here in this room a couple of times, the, the award winning Crime Lab that was constructed and the team that constructed that, the CARES Act team that got all the resources out into the community over the course of the COVID pandemic and the building permitting process efficiency efforts that were done up in the Building Department were some of the highlighted projects that we focused on yesterday. So a lot of great work being done across the board and so we had the opportunity to congratulate those folks yesterday, so I was happy we could do that. But I was also really happy to see, and I think both of you may have mentioned it, was that the, the, the folks attending yesterday were not just under the Board of County Commissioners, but this was a great opportunity to get folks from all over the county, including just a boatload of elected official departments who participated yesterday. And I know a lot of the, some of the ones who weren't able to participate really wanted to, just had some things that were, that had some conflicting things that they had happening yesterday. So I think as we move forward with this, in the future, it'll become more a staple as to what we do and we'll get participation from everybody. But I thought it was just great that we had that participation from all over the county. So thank you again Commissioners for your support.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I have one more thing for you Jeff, we had spoken about it, but I just wanted to be out this week in the newspaper. And I found out in the newspaper that there is a proposal for $200 million for a expansion of Convention Center. And I know, I just wanted to be out in the open about it. One, I was not happy that we found out in the newspaper. I know it was presented to City Hall. However, I'm only going to speak for myself, but I probably would imagine Commissioner Dreehouse may not have gotten the information as well or, as well as President Dumas. But we always seem to be last in getting these things. And it's always, when it gets to us, it's a rushed situation disguised as an emergency. And our board has to make very strategic decisions because we've got some big ticket items that are coming before us. We've got two stadiums, one that, one coming up right away and another in the future. We have a convention hotel that we've got to consider. We've got a proposal now for Fort Washington Way. And all these things seem to go $100 million plus, up to $500 million to $1 billion. And as you know, it says, you know, with everything, the economy is very shaky. And so we live on sales tax and property taxes and we're trying to keep the property taxes down. You know, we gotta be very strategic and send a message that we do have a, we do have policies that each of us have put together and the board has adopted, and we've got to make sure that all these things fit in there. So I was not happy to learn about it in the newspaper. I'm not happy that when it's brought to us, here it is, we don't have no input. And just speaking for myself, as someone in an industry, this is a bit of industry I've been in for decades, tourism. And I understand when something, how it looks, and I want something looking futuristic. But at the same time, I think we were very clear that the hotel has to be the top priority because even with the existing space in the Convention Center, we're losing conventions because we don't have that hotel. If we had the hotel, we could still be booking the Convention Center as is and be making money as we look at another phase. We also have a debt on a property, Millennium Property, $39 million in debt. And we're looking for something that will help us pay that debt off at that space. I'm told that they also have plans for that property to do some ice skating and some, you know, alcohol sales for themselves, and I don't know how they have those plans and they haven't come to the board. So I don't want us getting plans on the, on the back end and the media and they're all over us and we got 30 seconds to make this decision and if we don't do it, you know, we, we, you know, no, we want to be on the front end. We got some ideas. And we also have some other financial obligations that we've got to consider. So I just want to make sure and put that out there to even those who are running out here with all these prices. Like every week, they got an emergency, you know, something disguised as an emergency. And that's all, I need 100 million, I need 200 million, even the bank takes more time for that. You go get a home loan, you can't walk in the bank and walk out the bank the same day with the home loan. It takes time, they want paperwork, they got questions, they got appraisers, they got all that, they got to check your financials. Projects with 3CDC that we've done, but I just want to put that out there because it seems to be a pattern starting and I need that pattern to stop. So I've said, I've talked to you privately about it, but I wanted to mention it public that we are not, again, the ATM, we are not the rubber stamp, we're not your last stop, we're not your gap financing, we're not your give you the money and we run off. We have strategies planned based on the constituents that we serve and we serve people countywide. And we've got some big obligations coming up where, you know, like I said, the stadium, the Bengals contract, Reds will be coming soon. And we've got to put these things in an order of what's important and what's not important. We're not Santa Claus, we can't give you everything you want when you want it. So I just was saddened to hear that that had happened and I wanted to give you a chance to comment on it because I had told you about it, because I'm not even happy with the drawings. And it's all out there in the public now, people are coming to me about drawings that I never saw. And so we never got a chance, but if they meet with us, at least give us a chance, each of us to say what we think and get those things maybe hopefully incorporated as we move forward.
Yeah, thank you Madam Vice President, and I'm happy to respond, just briefly, not a whole lot more I can provide in terms of the, the details, I think you did a good job of covering the details on it. But there was a presentation over at City Council the other night where there were some details released on the, on the Convention Center, the design. I think it was done in the context of the city looking to put advanced $7 million into the, into the design of the, of the new Convention Center. So I think ultimately, the, the financing package that's going to have to be put together on this is going to have to include a lot of, of different variables. So I think one of the questions that came from the board was whether that was the city's contribution with the county being expecting to pick, being expected to pick up the rest, and that's not my understanding. We've charged 3CDC was putting, with putting together a financing package for this, one that makes sense and one, one that allows us to move forward on the project, recognizing as you indicated that the Convention Hotel is in fact the first priority of, of the county. So 3CDC is in the process of doing that, we're working with them on some of the financial assumptions and trying to better understand where, where they're going with that. A presentation will be forthcoming to the board on it. I am, as I share your regret that the timing of the county's presentation didn't happen concurrently with the, with the city's initial presentation, so that's something that we need to clean up moving forward. But we have some other projects, as you said, with them moving forward, like the bidding out of a new Headquarters Hotel, which we need to be updated on soon as well, given that that is ultimately what the board has indicated is driving this. So I'll provide more information as it becomes available, but just to your question, that's what the administration is aware of at this point.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I just wanted the message back to them before they do it is just, we're not stopping you from doing something with the city, all I'm saying is at least meet with us and let us see it so we don't, when it gets to the newspaper that we got to, and if they're putting in 7 million and it's 200 million, that leaves 193 million, so don't come running down here talking about can we get the gap or can we raise taxes? So if you're looking for us to take the 193 million dollar burden, I think your first stop should be here to see, is this what we want? Just like with Lincoln Heights, Commissioner Dreehouse and President Dumas have been working really hard on that, but it's the county that's putting the most money up. You know, we put up 5 million and they put up 2 million. So we got to, you know, it's got to have a little balance here. So if they put up 7 million and you ran down there, don't come running over here with 193 million dollars that's left to be financed. And then you come to us and say, "We gotta hurry up, we gotta go," the city don't with it. We have to put the message out that that will not be tolerated. We got to have some respect, so that was, that's what, and I appreciate you taking that message back to all those who need to hear it. Yes.
Just to tag on to that, I do, as I indicated, I think the, the financing, the financing strategy on the Convention Center is going to be complex, so I don't think it's going to be as simple as the city putting in seven and the county picking up the rest. I think it's going to involve a lot of different things, a lot of different components, which quite frankly, I think is going to take some time to discuss as, as you indicated, which I believe also, just from a timing perspective, will mean that as the Headquarters Hotel advances, that that will advance, at least in terms of next steps, probably in advance of, of the next steps on the Convention Center, so.
Well, that's good to know because the headline said, "Bold, but expensive." So I just wanted to make sure that, so thank you for clearing that up. Commissioner Dreehouse, anything you'd like to add? Okay, all right, so we're going to go to the calendar, the regular calendar. And we've got Todd Long here representing the Engineer Department for items number one and two.
Thank you Madam Vice President, so I'm Todd Long, Chief, excuse me, Chief Deputy Engineer for the Engineers Office. Item one is a resolution placing load limits on Winton Road Bridge at West Sharon Road. Based on a recent routine inspection, the engineer has determined that the bridge needs to be, have enforcement of load limits per the Ohio Department of Transportation load rating report. This, this item, if it's passed, will allow us to put the proper signage up. Are there any questions?
Any questions? No questions, I make a motion to approve item number one.
Second?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution to install no parking signs on the east side of Snyder Road. This will be from the center line of Kemper Road to a point approximately 315 feet from that point. The current parking practices on the section of Snyder The current parking practices on the section of Snyder Road do, do create a sight distance problem for vehicles that are trying to enter and exit the private drives within that zone. This is in Sims Township. So if this resolution passes, it'll allow us to place no parking restrictions in that zone.
I have one question on that. Will that be permitted? No parking?
Yes, it will.
Okay. And this is something the community, the people around here are okay with?
We have not received input on, in, I guess, in opposition to this. We've seen that it creates a sight distance problem. So we're trying to, to put these up to enforce the, the safety for those traveling public, being able to get in and out of their driveways. So I'm sure there are going to be some burdens for folks who were parking. What they were doing is they were parking with in the right of way and not in designed parking designation spots in the, in the commercial spot. So it was parking that was in the actual right of way on a gravel, gravel path, if you will. So it wasn't parking that is your normal type of parking spot. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I was just wondering because I'm not familiar exactly where you're referring to. But when you said people backing out, sometimes in a driveway, they might have two cars or they might have one on the street, one in the parking. So I just wanted to make sure that that was not what we're talking about.
No, what we're talking about is whether they're, whether they're in reverse, getting out of their driver or they're, they're coming from their driver with their nose toward the, the street. They aren't able to adequately see down the road enough to determine whether they can make a safe movement. These no parking signs will allow them to be able to see beyond and make that safe movement.
Gotcha. Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse?
I have no questions.
I make a motion to approve item number two.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Item number three is. Okay, thank you. Welcome. Item number three is MSD.
Hello. Lauren DiGherisi on behalf of MSD, I have Matt Spadari with me today as well. Just one item today. Item number three is related to MSD's Mount Washington Source Control Implementation Project. This request before you today is to approve the appropriation of easements necessary for this project that up until this point MSD has not been able to secure through negotiations. Specifically, this legislation will authorize the appropriation of one permanent and two temporary easements from one property owner. As background, this project was initiated to address chronic sewer backups affecting approximately 47 homeowners in the Woodlark Drive, Mayland Drive and Lucan Terrace area of the city of Cincinnati's Mount Washington neighborhood. The project includes the installation of over 4,400 linear feet of storm sewer ranging from 12 to 54 inches in diameter in order to separate storm flows from existing MSD combined sewers to mitigate SBUs while also facilitating future separation opportunities to reduce combined sewer overflows at CSO 182. The estimated cost of construction is approximately 8.9 million, but the request before you today is a zero dollar request. That's simply to authorize the appropriation of those easements, as I mentioned. MSD anticipates this project will be included in the 2023 CIP for construction. And once we secure all necessary easements, we plan to request authorization and funding for construction to hopefully start in the middle of 2023. With that, I can take any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do have questions on this one. So is this, how, how does this interplay or is it the same as the project that was started a number of years ago on Mount Washington? Where we were doing a pilot program to have individual homeowners put a device in their home or on their lawns, I guess, in their, in their yard to try to prevent the SBUs that were happening in that neighborhood. Is this a different neighborhood?
It is the same neighborhood. It is related. The approach changed. The neighborhood scope of, of work that you're describing was not going to be feasible. So we expanded the project area and looked at, you know, existing whip projects and what we could do to, as I said, address this SBU problem in this specific area as well as possibly tie it in and provide some benefit for related whip projects. And that's what we've done here. And that's, as it's currently designed.
Okay, so the pilot program is no longer happening and you're going to do the tie in to the main sewer line as opposed to what had been the project before. The, so, right, we're not moving forward with the pilot project.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's interesting. And so I assume that the neighborhood is supportive of this. This sounds like a more permanent solution. Is that right? Have you, has, or what's been the community input, I guess?
I think that is part of why we took this direction that they didn't want to have. You know, at one point we were talking about green infrastructure and things like that. Again, like a neighborhood solution. And I don't think that they wanted the infrastructure and the solution on their, on their property and rather preferred that it was in the right of way.
Okay. So, so this specific piece of legislation then is about an easement. Did you say that you have not been able to negotiate this particular easement?
That's correct.
And so is it one property?
It's one property.
So what's happening at that one property that they are objecting to the easement?
I, I don't get the impression that it is, you know, a hard no, we don't want to do this. I just think that we are moving forward with this legislation at this time and appropriation to minimize risk and keep with our construction schedule. I wouldn't say today that settlement is out of completely off the table. I think hopefully they will eventually reach a settlement, but this is simply to keep things moving along.
Okay.
And maintain schedule.
So this gives us the ability to move forward as those negotiations are ongoing?
Correct. I would say that it's fairly rare that things actually progress to, to trial.
Yeah. And, and is it, under what authority? Can you just help me better understand, under MSD's authority in what way? To, or is it, it's our authority?
It is the board's authority.
Authority.
Eminent domain.
Eminent domain.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Jeff, did you want to comment on this? You mentioned something about the prosecutor's office.
No, no, nothing to, to comment on directly, other than just typically when we do this, the MSD will utilize the, the county prosecutor's office when things proceed to appropriation. So that would, so the resolution would authorize the prosecutor's office to become involved with the appropriation process.
That's correct. And it is drafted that way to refer the matter to the prosecutor's office.
Okay. Mr. Dreehouse, you okay with that?
I am. It's just, I'm just curious about this one holdout amongst all of them. I went to those meetings in Mount Washington. This is a serious problem out there with this SBU backup. It's a chronic issue. It happens, you know, a lot as, as the weather is become more intense. It's just a curiosity to me that somebody would not want to be participating in this, this solution to that issue. But I, I assume that all the legal work has been done and you guys have talked to this owner to the point where we just need to move forward and hope that there's a resolution to that. So, so I'm, I'm willing to support this. In the future though, I would like a little more heads of, heads up just to ponder this a little bit further and do a little bit of investigative work because we, there's a history here. But I'm willing to move forward on this since it's only one property owner.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion to adopt item number three.
Second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to the consent agenda, but before I go all the way through, I got a note. Item number six, I want to make sure Jeff, are we?
Yeah, we're, Madam Vice President, we're, we're going to hold item number six, if that's okay with the board. There are some, just because of some title adjustments that we made up here on the sixth floor, there's some things in the resolution that don't appropriately align with what people's titles are right now. So we just need to go back and fix those and bring it back. But all the item would do is give certain individuals the authority to sign for me in my absence. We just need to have the right people assigned. So we'll get that fixed and bring it back to the board at a later date.
Okay. Do we need to take an action to hold it or just skip over it?
I would just skip over, I think we just skip over it.
Okay, great. Okay. So we're going to the consent agenda. We have several different items. Item number four is an appointment to the Hamilton County Transportation Improvement District. City of Cincinnati gets a number of appointments and they're recommending John Brazina, who is the Director of the City of Cincinnati Transportation and Engineering. Item number five is a resolution regarding our mobile crisis unit. We had it out there for several hours. I'm sure Commissioner Dreehouse probably talked more about it. But this allows us to be out seven days a week, almost 24 hours. We talked about it, but we now have allocation dollars for it. Item number seven is the additional of real property fees. This is for the land bank as well as some grants that we've got from the coroner's office and environmental services. We got some grant money for the mower program, electric mower program. Port Authority will receive additional funds to tune over a million dollars that came in from property taxes, delinquency that goes to the land bank. So that money is transferred over. So that's an item number seven. Item number eight is the bid awards and contracts authorized by the purchasing department. Item number nine, which we'll talk about in a minute. Though item number nine is just a car for the 20, we had a 2014 Jeep Wrangler. We're replacing it. The sheriff department is replacing that. And so there's $27,000, $115 for that. Item number 10, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute, but that is a, an agreement, execution agreement for a location for the sheriff's office. And that's $1,365,000. And JFS then has several contracts, one with the Talbot House in Hamilton County regarding our rental assistance program, but that's not, we got more than one rental assistance program. This is the PRC program and I'll have Jeff talk about that. Jeff, you want to talk about what that is?
You hit the nail right on the head. It is rental assistance. We have a prevention, retention and contingency program, which helps people who have an emergent need, whether it's job loss or finding employment, et cetera. The prevent, the PRC program, as we call it, helps people with those emergent needs and part of that is, can be rental assistance. And in this particular case, Talbot House is our rental assistance provider through that program. So it's a little bit different than the rental assistance that we do through the federal programs that we have, the emergency rental assistance, one and two programs that the board has been very active in, in promoting as well.
Okay, great. Item number 12 is a contract with the Dream Center for Girls of, with our jobs and family services. And, and then item 13 and 14 are petitions. One where we're drawing a petition to amend the annexation of Harrison Township and the city of Harrison. The other petition is an annexation of the land from Hamilton County to the city of Loveland. And those items are simply for the record. And then we have something from the recorder's office. Jeff, you want to talk about that one?
Certainly. This is just, this is a, under the Ohio revise code, the recorder can place a, a, a fee on every document recorded that will go to fund technology initiatives in the recorder's office. This is the continuation of the same program that the recorder has been doing. So I think it runs through 2025. It's just an administrative item to say the recorder is keeping the same fee. And the board will routinely approve these. But it is not an extension. It's, it's, it's going through 2025, but it's not a, an increase on the amount of fee. It's the same fee that was in place before.
Okay, thank you. I, I just wanted to highlight a few, I think, I'll let Commissioner Dreehouse, I'm sure she's going to talk about item number five. Which is very important, but certainly something I know she's been working very hard on. Wanted to just highlight the, the bids. One second. Yeah. One of the purchase order bids in there, just highlighting again. We do have some items in there helping with our NFL stadium. So just wanted to highlight again, we have different items in there. $42,000 for some additional things that we have. So we are continuously making improvements there. Wanted to highlight that. We've got some seating that we are replacing so that the seats are good and are working. So here it is, $49,000 to remove and repair seating at the club level. So we're doing that. And then we have, we also have some other things regarding preventative maintenance for video boards at the stadium as well. So we're $32,000 there. So we are continuously making sure that we're repairing and upgrading at the same time. Also in here is our disparity contract, Steve Love, SRL Consulting, $42,000 for the disparity study consulting services that is also in here as a minority business as well. I wanted to also talk about, I wanted to, Jeff, if you would talk about item number 10. Item number 10 deals with leasing space, but I also think it highlights the working and the work that you're doing to include minority businesses as well.
Certainly happy to. So this is a lease of facility space and office space for various divisions of the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. So we have been working with them for the better part of a year to get them into new space as their lease is expiring towards the end of this year. To my knowledge, this is the first time that we've used a certified minority vendor, a commercial real estate firm for the county's work in locating that space. They've done a fantastic job for us. It's the Robert Lewis Group who's helped us out with this one. And JR Foster specifically, they've done a fantastic job. We continue to have them work on other real estate analysis needs of the county as well. Now that we've got an experience with the firm and that we see the, the, the work that they do, we're continuing to work with them. So you'll be hearing their name more as we move through different real estate and property transactions of the county.
And this property is in Chevyat?
Believe it is out in the west Galbraith and Blue Rock Road area. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that. And also acknowledge your team in that because we're starting to see bringing in opening and bringing new people in, bringing minority businesses, working with majority businesses in a partnership type of way. And I wanted to highlight that you had mentioned it to me and I just wanted to highlight it. That's all that I have for the agenda. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight item number five, the mobile crisis unit. This is the 5 million that we, as a commission, decided we wanted to put towards this need in the community for mental health needs that are at extremely high level of concern in the community. And this gives us the ability to be nimble and fast acting when it comes to crises throughout the county. This is part of our American Rescue Plan dollars. And so we approved of that whole plan. And so I think it's important to note these as we roll them out one by one, that this is our response to not only what we know are the needs now, but some of it's related to COVID and some of the fallout from COVID. And so I'm really pleased that this one is rolling out at this, this moment in time. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So I make a motion to adopt items four. Items four, five, and then item seven through 12, and then except for the record, item 13 through 15.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
There's no further business, Commissioner Dreehouse? No further business. We are adjourned.